The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, February 10th, 2022.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Head bug under down for the. Okay, so we'll move on to the roll call, please.
Mayor Robertson.
Present.
Councilman Flinkus is absent tonight. Councilman Carson?
Hello.
Councilman Spear is absent tonight. Councilman Allworth is on by Zoom. Councilwoman Williams-Webber?
Present.
City Clerk Lee, City Treasurer H.R. Dr. Trask?
Here.
City Attorney Calhoun?
Here.
Public Court Supervisor Craycraft?
Here.
City Engineer Almond? City Fire Chief Stork?
Here.
City Building Official Peterson?
Here.
And that's all.
Okay, thank you. With that, we move on to Item 2, Public Comment. He's stitching in for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on the agenda item 91, cities to consider possible open negotiations for water allocation at the county golf course, this should not be considered. Your auditors always stated that a city must charge all entities for use of water at the same rate that has been established for their particular class of operation. City county governments are aware, you know, the true costs of operating their different functions. Years ago, the city was not charging its office the water to different parks and cemetery. The auditor chair wrote them up in the audit. The county commission gave free golf to family and friends. Had they collected from everybody, they would have enough money to pay for their water bill. I remind you, golf is a luxury, not a necessity. Mr. Mayor, I've asked in the past, and I'm asking again, did the golf course get plotted with a previous water bill? Federal law prohibits the discrimination of providing any federally funded or assisted public utility. I want to remind you that the so-called negotiating team from the county is the same team that met the city over, strangled them with a version of police contract. They then refused to negotiate a fire assistance contract, which would have given some relief to the city from the police contract. We have to have fairness. You're not getting that. The county found money to hire $135,000 manager, which they don't need, and another $100,000 for buyout for early retirement to listen to the finances. And that does not include her 25% raise last year. They claim they don't have money? They need to spend. Mr. Mayor, your agenda item C5, you're considering request for auditing services to get that done, and audits the Federal Road and Railway, or for the Northern Railway. I remind you, they need to pay for their own services. They do not operate under the Nevada Open Mean Law, and they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money where the taxpayers are not allowed to see how to spend. Before they're given any consideration, they need to come back into the city's oversight and operate under the Nevada Open Mean Law. They get to respond to the rumors that tens of thousands of dollars have been embezzled, and how long are we going to wait before we get an answer? Mr. Mayor, on numerous occasions, I've asked for a list. Those homeowners, the Brad Christiansen is required to sign a document requiring install Krevin Gunner, the Ronder D'Homme, but that he will not give them certificate of occupancy. I've waited long enough. How long do I have to wait?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have to three minutes.
I need some answers, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any public?
Good evening, councilmembers. Mike Weble, County Manager for White Pine County. I'm here to also address item 91 on this board's consideration of reopening negotiations for water allocations. Chairman Howe addressed the society board earlier this week, and what the county is trying to do is, if the ultimate goal of this water negotiation is to discourage the use, the extra use of potable city treated water so that that can be utilized for beneficial use for the community, residential use and have plenty reserved and have a sustainable plan going forward, then the county, as a partner with the city, since we're both owners of that golf course, when you look at altering the water source. This is not a new concept, but the county has saved a couple hundred thousand already towards that project. They're putting it in a well out there. We have county water rights that can utilize, and we are going to appropriate more money this year in our budget process to get that project going, get it off the ground. So we want to partner with the city, but we also want to look at the agreement this summer, this season, and next year. Because if the ultimate goal of that agreement was to discourage additional use of potable water, then that money, the taxpayers' money, could be better allocated to putting in a well and partnering with the county. So that's what we're looking at, and we'll bring that up at the negotiations committee. Obviously, that decision doesn't have to be made today. We're just asking that the board allow us to consider other options to get completely off of the city's potable water. That's the solution that we want to bring to the table. We just don't want to be putting that money into that project and also paying the additional rates to the city. It's not truly about revenue. It's truly about discouraging potable water use. That's what we're trying to accomplish, and we want to work with the city to get that done. And I think Utility Board will be able to opine on that as well. I think we can get the support of all the players, but we just want the opportunity at least to explore that option to mitigate against paying for both the extra appropriation fees and the cost of putting in a well at the county's expense. That's all. Thank you.
Are you giving me a hand around for the agenda item?
It's perhaps, yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing and sitting now, we'll close public comment and move on to Item 3. Mayor's Discussion for Possible Action Approval of Agenda Including Removal of Agenda Items. All in motion. So, motion from?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is Captain Allworth. I would like to, on your new business, item number 2, C about the Porter Group to submit an earmark on behalf of the solar station panel. If it's them, I'd like to table that this time till we get more information on that.
If you'd like to table that, that'll take a motion during the item, but if you just want it removed, we can do that.
And put it back at another time.
Okay. So is that a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item C2?
Correct.
Okay. Motion from Councilman Allworth on the removal of that item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carson. Is there any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried into order. Okay, we'll move on to Item 4, City Department Reports. Fire Chief?
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things. We did start on the replacement of the doors at the station. The back part of the station is complete. The windows are in. Part of the windows that came were put together on at the factory, so they got new ones coming, so those will get swapped out. And next week, they are going to start on the front bay doors. Also, we did get all of our new certification equipment in. We did in-service training with it on Saturday at landfill. We had a little bit of turnout for that. Councilman Allworth did show up for a little while on watch to see the new tools work, so huge addition to the department, but I think you add for approval on that for everybody, but I said, other than that, unless you guys got any questions, I'll go to the other.
Any questions for the Fire Chief? Okay, thank you. I believe the Police Chief is absent tonight. Municipal Court Judge, is he on Zoom? Judge Coster, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney, open your report. Okay, City Clerk? City Treasurer? City Public Court Supervisor? City Water Operator, do you have their report? City Engineer?
We've been helping Jennifer. We get some CDPT applications, and so those are just going to get finalized and be turned in very shortly. We've been assisting landfill on some cost estimates, which the budget's coming up, also the runoff, which is how the instructors are part of the expansion up there. 7P well did go down. The motor burned up on it. They replaced it. Now the motor running better, pumping out earnings, so I think it's, you know, something in there that's going on, so I think they're going to pull that in the next couple of days here. Check out this company. I think that's the backup line by Thursday next week, so.
Would you, Jim, would you turn the mic a little towards, and just talk? Thank you.
Speak up.
I'm trying to stay away. There's some germs on this, so.
Get a little closer. Man up.
So anyway, let's take a look through the team.
Get a grip.
And so the other thing is, we're kind of taking all of our water, our electrical bills and spreading across our wells and trying to see which one are more efficient. So as we start using more this summer, we're trying to use the most efficient way that we possibly can, so. Those are kind of making things. So many other questions for me? Okay, thanks.
City Building Affairs?
Just to report that was filed. If there's any question, happy to answer it.
Okay, thank you. We'll turn the gavel over to Mayor Prokant Williams Harper, right in front.
Matt, Northern Real William Foundation Report, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. It was pretty much January. Fire and ice was very successful. We spent the month of January working on our antique fridge equipment, getting it ready for the photo shoots, which starts tomorrow. And we will have photo shoots this weekend, a photo workshop the following weekend, and then we wrap up the month with another photo shoot. And all the three, the two photo shoots and the workshop are sold out. And then, starting with the film festival is the kickoff to our 2022 excursion season. So we're gearing up for a very busy year. That's all I have, unless someone has to question me.
No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Item 6, Reports, and we'll start with the City Council. Councilman Allworth, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. As Fire Chief Stork reported, I did attend that extrication training that the lab built with the new amicus tool. And I can honestly say I was totally, totally impressed with it. Through all my years in the department, the tools we had in the past were 20 years old. They still work, but these new ones are unbelievable. I believe with more training, they could actually take any vehicle down to the frame in less than 20 minutes. Those tools are amazing, the amount of power they put out. It's a good investment. We just need lots of training. It's amazing, but I appreciate the invite they gave me, too, so that's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Williams Harper?
Nothing at this time.
Councilman Carson?
No report.
For my report, you have the items I've signed in there, and most of you've heard, but in case you haven't already, the state, the governor, rather, did lift the mask mandate. There'll be more information on that coming, but effective immediately, as far as I was aware. That was lifted for our state, so I'm hoping that's truly indicative of the progress we've been seeing in the pandemic, that things are rolling back and that, you know, everybody's getting help here. Fingers crossed. Let's see, we're still prior to hearing here, so we will move on to Item 9. Items for Discussion of Possible Action that the Ely City Council has recommended by the Municipal Utilities Board. Item 1, Member of Bureau, Discussion for Possible Action, Consideration and Possible Grant of White Pine County's Request to Open Negotiations for Water allocations at the golf course.
The Utility Board recommended approval of this today.
Okay. And if I could just speak a little bit to county manager Regal's concerns and some of the conversation I heard this morning as I was listening to the meeting, that the real objective of this is to make sure that we can maintain adequate fire storage for fire suppression during the summer months. We've had a number of situations during the driest and hottest part of the summer. We have one of our larger wells go down. If the golf course is running full bore, and if it's the driest part of the summer, by all reason, it need to be to keep their greens and fairways in top shape, but we have a hard time keeping a fire storage in that scenario. And I would just encourage, I think ultimately getting them on an irrigation well is definitely the best route. In the meantime, though, I really would encourage and like to see some repairs and efficiencies put into the system that's currently there so that when they do get on their own system, and even while they're on ours, we find a way to do this more efficiently and with less water because, you know, getting them on their own well is going to help certainly, but they're still going to have to be paying pumping fees, and they have enough water in their system to do that. And as I understand from some of the research that's been done, watching that over the past year, there's $10,000 to $15,000, $10,000 to $15,000 gallons a night that gets lost in leaks, and, you know, I think we would all do well to make sure that we're using, you know, public resources responsibly. And there's just no way around that golf courses use a lot of water, but if we can get them to use the least amount of water possible, I think that that would be the first and lowest thing for you. But that's, that's my two cents.
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to elaborate on that a little bit, too. A couple of years ago, times were different. We had our RW, our 6P and 7P going full time. 6 is now kaput. It's no longer running. And for instance, right now, 7's been out of commission for two to three weeks, and if this was a little summer, I know the golf course would be terribly upset with us because that would be our first phone call. We've done it before. We've asked them to shut off their water because we need to save it for fire storage, and it puts everybody in a bad position, so. The best remedy is really to get the golf course their own levels, so whatever that looks like, it's worth, worth doing for sure. It'll better everybody's position.
And I'm in support of sitting down with the two negotiating committees, having the opportunity to discuss those options. Those are definitely not. That's not my realm of expertise per se, and I know we've got some great people on both sides that can talk about that.
And I guess my only big question, too, is we did have a negotiation team last year, so I don't know if the city wants to keep the people in place that were on that last year or redo it and draw some new names or whatever.
Do we remember exactly who was on the negotiating committee, just off the top of our head?
Did a little research in between Utility Board and City Council, and from what I can find, it appears to have been you and Public Court Supervisor Craycraft and the Treasurer, so.
Okay.
So we could definitely reconfigure that.
How does the council feel about this?
I have no problems getting to with the county and seeing what we can do for sure.
Okay. Motion from Councilman Carson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 3-0. And just as a reminder, since we only have three council members here tonight, all items that do pass will have to pass with all three voting for and aye.
It's dice.
Item 2, Councilman Carson, Discussion for Possible Action, Approved Resolution 2022-2, Changing the Fee. Commercial entities are charged to dispose of tires to $280 per ton.
So we did change the price. Utility Board did recommend approval of this. We did change the price last year, but with inflation and trucking costs going up, we're charging 240 at the gate right now. Our shipping is 260 a ton just to get it back to Utah, so we pick 280 a ton, and hopefully we won't have to come in front of the board for a year or two and increase that. And so I would recommend approval.
Can I have a motion for this?
I'll second.
Motion from Councilman Williams Harper. Is that okay?
Sure.
And second from Councilman Allworth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any?
Aye.
Councilman Spear, Councilman Allworth, Discussion for Possible Action, Approval for Porter Group to Submit an Earmark Request on behalf of the City of Ely for Systemwide Water Meter Installation.
Okay, this is, this is a, this is going to be an expensive ask, but it's definitely needed. And the City Clerk Lee has mentioned time and time again, we need to do a water conservation plan, and this is one of the biggest things we can do to ensure USDA loans and grants. So it's, I should mention and remember, it's going to be expensive. It's a long time coming. We need to get going on it, so that's why we're going for it. You know, they're estimated over $27 million today. So we hopefully get it asked through the, through the current administration in DC.
Okay. Can I have a motion for the second?
I'll make a motion for approval for Porter Group to Submit an Earmark Request on behalf of the City of Ely for Systemwide Water Meter Installation.
Great. Now, motion from Councilman Williams Harper. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Carson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried into order. The mayor will recess the regular City Council meeting for a meeting of the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Ely. Item 10 on that will be items for Discussion of Possible Action of the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Ely. Item 1, Mayor Robertson, Discussion for Possible Action, Direct City Clerk to Form a Redevelopment Area Action Committee to review the City of Ely Redevelopment Plan and make recommendations regarding redevelopment funds and. Councilman Allworth brought this up, and while I was in my government-ordered quarantine during COVID, I took the time to read through our redevelopment plan. I think there's some real possibility and opportunity there, as I understand Councilman Allworth does, and we'd like to have some plans here on how to spend some of that money in these redevelopment areas, so.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion from Councilman Allworth. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Williams Harper. Any further discussion? And there, there's a copy included in your packet there. I really would encourage all council members to kind of leaf through that and come up with some ideas as well, so. If there's no other further discussion, I'll call the court. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried into order. And we will recess the Redevelopment Agency meeting and go back to the Ely City Council to item, item 11. The consent agenda, we have minutes from January 13th and bills from January 26th.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Councilman Allworth. I'd like to make a disclosure. I'm a passing with the Ely Volunteer Fire Department, and any bills that I may approve, I believe are in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Ely. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, if there are no questions, clarification on either of those items, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the minutes under the.
I'll approve.
Motion from Councilman Carson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from?
I'll second.
Well, she needs to go again. Councilman Williams Harper?
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried into order. Beel Business, Item 1, Councilmember City Clerk Lee, Discussion for Possible Action, Approval of Interlocal Agreement between White Pine County and City of Ely for Perpetual Operation and Maintenance of Sniplo Funded Projects.
I'll defer to City Attorney, who's been working with the district attorney and also and in our wise legal counsel on the changes since last week.
Now, does anyone have any questions for me here?
Heard the distance, Councilman Allworth. I'd like to thank Leo for the work on this, because I've been off several times. My whole push behind this was to make sure the city only maintains city-funded sniplo projects. I did not like the way the wording was, and I'm sure he hammered that with the attorneys, but the way it's presented right now, I think it's, keeps the city in our own backyard and staying within the city limits to do sniplo projects.
Okay. Are there any other questions for our council? If not, I'm going to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion from Councilman Allworth. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Carson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Carried into order. Item B2, Councilmember City Attorney Kahun, Discussion for Possible Action and Approval of the City of Ely to Execute a Settlement Participation Form Exhibit B and Subdivision Settlement Participation Form Exhibit K, each containing releases pursuant to the One Nevada Agreement on Allocation of Opioid Recoveries, One Nevada Agreement previously agreed upon by the City of Ely in August 2012, for participation in settlements, one, the State of Nevada, and three of the opioid distributor defendants. Marasource Bergen Drug Corporation, Carton Health, and McKesson has listed in Exhibit C to the One Nevada Agreement, and two, State of Nevada, and one, opioid manufacturer defendant Jansen, Johnson and Johnson has listed in Exhibit C to the One Nevada Agreement, and execution of Amendment 1 to One Nevada Agreement on Allocation of Opioid Recoveries regarding a reduction in attorney's fees to the One Nevada Agreement for purposes of the two settlements on the line. Any questions? So many questions. Could you please describe for myself and the council something, David?
Test, test.
It's, it's still sheltered.
Is it? Okay.
But we have the bikes in the room.
I got you. Could you please describe for myself and the council kind of the the nature of this? As I understand it, they're doing a settlement of just those listed right here?
Correct.
And then they will be out of the lawsuit?
Correct. Yeah, so this in no way involves any other parties to litigation. It's just the parties here, all kind of the defendants.
And how does this litigation proceed once we've settled here? Does it just keep proceeding the way it has been, or what's the?
It will, yeah. With regard to these parties, there will be, of course, as part of the settlement, there will be a number of monies that will be distributed to the plaintiffs. And the litigation will continue forward with regard to these obligations.
Okay. Are there any questions for council regarding this? Okay. I don't know that we're going to be able to hear Councilman Allworth if those speakers aren't working.
You need to take a recess and fix it.
Hello? Okay.
Weekend, you did?
Okay, I hear you too.
Great. Did you have anything to add on that item 2 there?
No, no, nothing about that.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council on a second?
I'll approve.
Motion to approve from Councilman Carson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from?
Go ahead, just carry on.
Second from Councilman Williams Harper. Do we have any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carried into order. We'll move back to the public hearing on page 2. The mayor will recess the regular City Council meeting for a public hearing at 5:30 PM on the following topics. Councilman Spear, Public Hearing, Discussion Only, Approval to Change 8th Street Between Clark Street and Almond Street to Two-Whe Traffic. Will undertake discussion from the board or public? Will you entertain discussion from the board or public? Board and public. Or the board and public, please.
Mr. Mayor, there's no real need to have two-way traffic in that area. You need the parking. It's worked for years. As a resident of this community, I believe, or I encourage you to leave it as it is. The traffic is just not there for two-way traffic.
Pat Stork, speaking to the public citizen and business owner, seven fifty-three Altman. There is a need to have that, you know, it don't affect George's business, but it affects my business by having that road one-way when they close the street on Clark Street. I encourage you to change that road to two-way. It's no different than any other side street down Altman that is two-way traffic. And I know it was discussed in the past of making it, maybe when you come out on Altman to only be able to turn right. I disagree with that. It's still to turn left or right. If there's vehicles there and you can't see to turn left, it's, it's a no-brainer, just like the thing down on Augen and Orson, or North Street, then turn right. But to say it's not an effect on the business, it's a huge effect on my business when my delivery trucks can't get in or anything else on the days that they have Clark Street. So I disagree with Mr. Chatchis and I encourage you to change that to both directions and you can exit on Altman either left or right. Thank you.
My main concern on that was parking for the middle school. I know there are teachers and staff that do park over there. We had to eliminate parking to accommodate that. I think that could, they already have limited parking. I want to say the concerns, as I recall from the sheriff, were the visibility on the left turn, whether or not there's cars parked there as the building's proximity to the corner. Am I remembering that myself? I may be. Either or, I do tend to agree with business owner Pat Stork of the need and the, that it generally matches most other streets down there that are also about that size, but those are my thoughts. Is there any other comment or discussion from either the council or the board?
Mr. Mayor?
Please go ahead.
Now, this is Councilman Alworth. I agree also with you and, and business owner Pat Stork. You know, on the last meeting I mentioned, right-hand turn only, I think, you know, avoid an accident, which we don't need the fire department. I don't know if that curb is from the old Plaza Hotel, wherever it is, if we could paint that red, or to save, I would paint that red, so alleviate any blind spots if you had to make a left-hand turn or go straight across the road. That's mine on the comment, but I think it's a due need too because they got a nice parking lot that they put in back there for their businesses and they block it off upon, I think, what is that, Seventh Street or Sixth Street? So I think it's, I think there's much needed time to change things.
Okay. If there are no other comments, I will close the public hearing and move on to item eight, discussion for possible action, items pertaining to the public hearing. Item one, Councilman Spear, discussion for possible action, approval to change Eighth Street between Clark Street and Altman Street to two-way traffic.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Alworth.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to change Eighth Street between Clark Street and Altman Street to two-way traffic with possible consideration input from the end dot traffic people.
Okay.
They should have been here.
I'll have, entertain a second.
I'll second.
So we have a motion from Councilman Alworth. We have a second from Councilman Carson. Any further discussion? Here and now, I'm called for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried into order. Unless I miss something, we'll move on to senior business and I'll hand the gettable to Mayor Williams Harper.
Mayor Robinson, if you would, for discussion only. State of the city address, please.
Honorable council members, citizens and staff, distinguished guests, I am honored to deliver to you the State of the City Report for NRS two sixty-six. The report, these reports are important to the transparency and accountability of local government to its citizens and neighbors. One of the top concerns city residents and elected officials have when looking into the state of affairs of their city or the finances, is the city solvent, are my tax dollars being used responsibly? The City of Ely's annual budget is not the largest out of the nineteen cities in our state. In fact, I suspect we're in the bottom five as far as budget size. This being the case, it is that much more critical that the City of Ely guard every penny and scrutinize every expenditure to ensure that our citizens are provided with the services that every resident has the right to expect about planning and looking towards the future. When I took office there three years ago, the first audit, the first annual audit turned up state compliance problems as well as other issues. That same year, the city had appointed a new city clerk and new city treasurer, both with many years of experience in working on behalf of the City of Ely and their people. In the past three years, the staff, together with close work from the city council, have dramatically turned the audit results around, resolving all state compliance issues and correcting process errors and material weaknesses. City departments routinely end the fiscal year within or under budget. Department heads have taken an active role in the budgeting process, lending their on-the-ground experience and departmental expertise to make sure the city's annual budgeting process is realistic and effective. Their participation has been essential to the success of tightening up the city's finances. With the help of staff and the leadership, the city has been able to maintain a healthy ending fund balance in the general fund even through the uncertainty of COVID. This fiscal year, the city is projecting an ending fund balance of nearly one million dollars. This in short means your city is spending responsibly and making sure it saves for a rainy day and future needs while still taking care of city services. I would not be here talking about these successes without the hard work of our department officials and city employees. Like most organizations, over the past couple of years, we've had a fair amount of turnover for various reasons, changes in the labor market, pandemic stresses, et cetera. I am proud and appreciative of each of our employees, whether they've been with the city for years or only a short time. Your city employees are routinely working late into the night, repairing critical infrastructure, plowing snow on holiday, on a holiday when their family celebrates at home, rushing out of bed to attend an accident or to fight a fire, attending to your complaints and concerns in our offices, and numberless other tasks that keep the city running. During the onset of COVID, when little was known about what the future might hold, city employees took a substantial pay cut in order to make sure the city was financially prepared for the feared but unknown. I am pleased to report that the pay cut was only temporary and that we've been able to make that up to the employees with more and more refunds from the American Rescue Plan Act. When many workers were sent home to work in safety, the city employees stayed on the job, often putting themselves in harm's way to care for the sick and injured of our community and to make sure that the critical infrastructure and processes of government kept functioning. In addition to being responsible with the finances of the city, city leadership has been proactive in assisting where possible during these pandemic years. COVID has been with us for a significant portion of these last three years. It has caused disruptions to our lives and families and community in ways we could not have imagined them. I applaud the council's proactive measures to assisting our community through these trying times. In the past three years, the City of Ely has issued thirteen low-interest business loans from the city's redevelopment fund and revolving loan fund. Thirty-five grants have been issued to businesses that the state had ordered closed as non-essential. In all, nearly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars was distributed to the Ely business community from various sources. Additionally, funds that were distributed by the federal government have been employed assisting local nonprofits, such as the Local Ministerial Association Food Bank, which also helps to put on the community holiday dinners, the cash program to feed local children, the Boys and Girls Club, Magic Carrot Preschool, and others. The city has been able to update many of the tools our fire department and EMS staff use, as well as to make sure they're stocked with needed supplies. And, and as a side note, some of that equipment that they were talking about being old, when the mayor was in elementary school, he was part of a fundraiser to buy those tools. So they've been in service for more than twenty years, probably thirty-five or longer. The city's, additional funds have been made available to our essential volunteer fire department to be used as they see fit for equipment, training, and member support. The city fire department could not function without the selfless service to our community by the members of the Ely Volunteer Fire Department. Federal funds have also been used to update the city website and online services, as well as for the use of Zoom for city council and other meetings. In the near future, these funds will also be used to update the city's communications and online connectivity infrastructure, bringing the city tools and processes on par with current technologies. In the coming months and years, we plan to employ these federal dollars on tourism endeavors as well as water and sewer improvements, bringing better broadband to our area and other worthy community initiatives, and buying new speaker system. Realizing that our annual budget would be insufficient for all of the city's needs, the City of Ely continues to work with our lobbying firm and the Nevada League of Cities, as well as our state and federal representatives to secure outside funding for projects such as park improvements, infrastructure updates and repairs, broadband improvements, housing availability, the completion of the state's highway and storm drain project, and many other projects and programs to invest in the facilities and economy of our area. I firmly believe that for the city to be successful, we need to be cultivating good working relationships with other entities in our community, as well as with the state and federal governments. In the past three years, I am pleased to report on the close and cooperative relationship the City of Ely has been able to maintain with White Pine County. The city and county have and continue to cooperate closely on a number of shared departments and endeavors. The City of Ely has been able to provide fire and emergency medical services to areas of the county in support of the county's own volunteer fire EMS organizations. The City of Ely hasn't had a successful arrangement for many years for police protection with the White Pine County Sheriff's Office. The City of Ely has been able to provide the county with building inspection services and animal control services. For a number of years, the city and county road departments have been able to pool resources, together with the help from the Regional Transportation Commission, to jointly complete larger projects in the City of Ely and in White Pine County. The city and the county have been able to successfully work together these past three years on tax agreements, a joint election agreement, the Joint Regional Planning Commission utility agreements, grant submissions, and many other items, large and small. Their willingness to sit down with the City of Ely and adjust and tweak these arrangements as needed has made these shared services successful and have benefited taxpayers across the city and county as a whole with better services as well as cost savings. As outlined in the statement made a few months ago, I'm also pleased that the City of Ely was able to donate property that the new White Pine County Justice Center now sits on, thereby enabling the under security to fund it, consolidating the location for all our court services in our area, municipal justice, juvenile, and district, I believe will be a great convenience for the people of Ely and White Pine County for years to come. I have been up to the new facilities for our municipal court and am very impressed with the new location. I have been even more impressed at the job our municipal court and staff have been doing. Conducting court proceedings during this pandemic has been no easy task. Working with our city attorney, the municipal court has been able to clear case backlogs and resolve the matters propitfall in a respectful and efficient manner. We are fortunate to have such professional and dedicated public servants working in our municipal court. To assist our hardworking city staff in doing the best work they can, with the limited help and resources at their disposal, it is vitally important that we provide them with the best tools. Our building department has been making great strides in employing new plan review software and taking more of the review process digital. I previously mentioned the updated tools and materials we've been providing to our fire EMS department. Animal control, our department, one dedicated employee, will finally be getting the appropriate licensing and tracking software to help make the animal licensing process more automatic, and the aim, with the aim of getting better widespread compliance. The new software should be fully implemented by this spring. Our engineering department has been collecting infrastructure system data using seasonal help to be able to implement citywide G.I.A. system that will assist the city in everything from zoning issues to knowing which water line to replace and add. These tools will assist the city now and in the future in making spending decisions based on the best data and facts available, ensuring that your tax dollars are spent efficiently and effectively. A few months ago, a detailed article went out regarding the work being done to improve city streets. The pooling of local resources between the City of Ely, White Pine County, and the Regional Training, Planning Commission, sorry, Regional Transportation Commission, has led to the completion of more street maintenance and repair projects in the past few years than probably all of the last ten years combined. Needed equipment has been purchased, new surfacing methods have been tested and implemented, and grants have been applied for and put to work, such as the work that has been taking place in Mericane. While there are many more streets to repair, and of course, mother nature is always assisting us in creating more potholes, rest assured that your road department will be out repairing potholes and performing those repairs as soon as weather allows. In regard to your water and sewer infrastructure, in this past year alone, I am pleased to report that the city has been able to affect nearly one point two million dollars in system improvements, work that has been done in conjunction with the NDOT. Some parts of the City of Ely's water system can be traced back one hundred years or more, and there is no shortage of improvements and updates that need to be made, but we are making progress. Government can be slow and change can be slow, but when you put the two together, sometimes the pace can be glacial. However, I am confident that the City of Ely is moving forward and in the right direction. We can, we continue to audit and evaluate every process the city has. The city has disposed of idle and empty property for the development of housing, and I hope we can dispose of more. In a move that should have happened long ago, the City of Ely leased the city corrals to an organization with the expertise and drive to really improve that community asset. I'd like to say to the White Pine Corral Association that the city corrals have never looked better. The city was also able to lease the old armory building to the state for use by the Nevada Highway Patrol, turning a decaying unused building into a rent-paying property. I would further like to applaud the council for their efforts in adjusting, fixing, and cleaning up the city code over the last three years. They've corrected omissions in the fire code, tightened and clarified the process for dealing with nuisance properties, fixed organizational charts, updated policy manuals, and many other items almost too numerous to list. They've also been looking down the road to take care of items such as short-term rentals, ideas that help our redevelopment areas, and generally how to provide for the continued success of Nevada six old as a city. As I've read about problems in other communities around the, around the West that are experiencing growth and losing the battle for their identity and peace and satisfaction of their residents, I believe the old adage still rings true, that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Change and growth will come, but planning for it will make sure that Ely retains those attributes that its citizens love her for. Deciding ahead of time what we want our city to look like ten, twenty, or even fifty years from now will ensure that the growth of Ely, that with growth, Ely will not lose her identity. I believe I speak for the council as well as myself and also our city employees that these last few years have been challenging, and while we have come a long way in a short time, there is still much to be done. I am excited for what's on the horizon for our city. I am proud and honored to be serving with these council members, city officials, and city staff, and I am proud of their accomplishments over the past three years. I look forward to continuing our work and encourage the input and participation of my fellow citizens and residents in these projects and the processes of government. Strong cities make strong states, and strong states make a strong America. Thank you for this opportunity to report on the state of the city of Ely, and God bless.
Are there any questions or anything the council would like to add?
Mayor Robinson, Councilman Alworth, well said. Thank you. Good job. Thanks very much.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item three. Councilman Spear, Councilman Alworth, discussion only. Update on Porter Group efforts on behalf of the City of Ely.
I'd like to table that, Mr. Mayor. I'd motion to table.
I have a motion to table. Do I have a second? I'll second. All in favor of table?
Aye.
I don't know if we have to table a discussion item, but I just. Item four, council members, city clerkly, discussion for possible action, consideration of Carl Schu's offer to purchase A.P.N. zero zero one dash two nine six dash zero one from the City of Ely in the amount of three thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars pursuant to NRS two sixty-eight point zero five nine, and possible direction to city staff to prepare resolution that said purchases in the best interest, resolution that said that best purchase is in, to prepare resolution that said purchases in the best interest of the city.
So this parcel meets two of the conditions that would exempt it from an appraisal, one being adjacent to the respective purchaser's real property and also be too small for economically viable use. Mr. Schu is here and can answer any questions that the council has.
Evening, Mr. Mayor.
Evening, Councilmen. Here for any questions? I would like to purchase that for the purpose of kind of regrading it because the water that comes off the hill flows right along there and it's kind of pushing in on a wall that is there that I got. So part of that is to buy that and rebuild that wall into that partial and plus improving. It's going to look out better than it is right now because overground bleeds, the sidewalks destroying on it. It's, you know, makes sense. It'll make it a little better too.
With this assistance?
Listen here, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yes, this is Councilman Alworth. Mr. Schu, is this going to be a shop for your personal use for mechanic work and so forth, like a, just for, like a garage for yourself? Is it going to be turned into a business?
No, it's not going to be turned into business. It's going to be a shop, but it's going to be just for my personal use.
Okay, thank you.
To my understanding, it's not commercial.
Would this, would this help in getting any of those vehicles you have stored in the city right away, stored somewhere else?
Well, probably they'd be stored inside of it. They will disappear to us.
Okay. I.
I am working on getting rid of a bunch of, a bunch of everything, so.
Sure. I am personally through the bank of documentation on this, and of course, we've all driven past this property multiple times a day if you're coming down to city hall. I think it's a, it's a, it's a fair proposal, and I think it's in the best interest of of the public at large and the city, and certainly if the troops are willing to do it, and hopefully in the best interest of them as well. I'm, I'm in support of this. How does the council feel about it?
I don't have any questions. I agree.
Does the council, would the council like to make a motion?
I would approve.
Motion from Councilman Carson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Williams Harper. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have five, Councilmember City Treasurer, trust, discussion for possible action, approval to release a request for proposal for professional auditing services to perform Nevada Northern Railway Foundation's calendar year 2021, 2022, and 2023 annual audits. Anything that needs to be added or any questions? All in favor? Any motion on this?
I'll make a motion for approval for requests for proposals for professional auditing services.
Motion from Councilman Williams Harper. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Carson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried in so ordered. Item six, Councilmember City Treasurer, trust, discussion for possible action, approval of memorandum of understanding between city of Ely on behalf of the city fire department bargaining unit and the International Union Operating Engineers Local Three.
We're going to double check.
Oh, we do all that.
Well, he understands it.
So basically, all this is, we entered into an MLE with the union to be able to start an underfill of what the position is now and then train them going forward. It's just going to be a temporary thing due to the lack of getting any qualified applicants or any applicants, period. So just a simple little language change. We'll look it over. Pretty basic. We'll revert back, and then, you know, who knows, we're be doing union negotiations here in another couple of weeks and maybe they'll want to sort of end it as a permanent thing or whatever, so. Just another tool to give us a little more avenue for a kind of expand our pool of applicants.
With any luck, we have two applicants.
Three right now, possibly.
Oh, possibly three, that's correct, that we could interview if this passes.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I think it's a great idea. I'll leave it approved.
Motion from Councilman Carson. Do I have a second?
General seconds.
Councilman Alworth seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried in so ordered. With that, we'll move on to item twelve, public comment. Please take your name for the record. You only have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, your State of the City was pretty interesting. Painted a very rosy picture, and that's all well and good, but I want to remind you there's discrimination, there's selective enforcement, and it hasn't been addressed yet, and I'd like to talk if you're addressing it. Mr. Mayor, once again, I'm requesting a complete list of properties and individuals that the city has permitted among the RRVs on the city lots and city streets while living in a ten regional planning commission meetings on a regular basis, and I'm not seeing one application to date. I received a fine to have them off the street. I'm the only one that sent for you. Everybody else is doing business as usual. That means to stop. You haven't done anything. I didn't realize you'd been in there almost three years. Almost three years ago, I gave you a list of items, including pictures of discrepancies. I'd want your answers in writing as I requested at that time. Mr. Mayor, within a hundred feet of Mr. Carson and Mr. Alworth, Mr. Trailer, are dead. They never once, but they pay utilities. They made two citations. You can't have selective enforcement. And when you have two councilmen that are sitting, have somebody sitting on the doorstep, they can't look away. Mr. Mayor, the city has not, excuse me, the regional planning commission, the city today has not addressed the city code violations by previous president members of the planning commission as well as the city councilman and county commissioner. I brought pictures of enforcement. Mr. Flankis, get your going after individuals for so-called rundown properties. He's approaching on the city right away, the building on the city sidewalk. Old vehicles, tractor nuisance building. You're going after others, you're not doing anything. Mr. Spear, that's a RV on a residential lot, no special permit, no care to gutter, and you're worrying about everybody else. Mr. Alworth, had a business, special use permit, payment utilities. Heaven knows, change the location, same thing. You have rules and regulations, but you don't. Need to address that, Mr. Mayor. I'm noticing agents about discrepancies, buildings, tractor nuisance. You haven't done anything. I was told to man up. You people need to man up.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
There's a complaint, Mr. Mayor, and I've not seen any lawlessness at all.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Jim Alworth, speaking in public comment as a private citizen. I'm not able to say if Mr. Chatches is wearing a mask or not, but I'm glad I'm 356 miles away because he's a germ-tread son of a gun. And you go back in the history, Doc Holliday had a terrible cough like that, and a dying of tuberculosis. We have got to do something about his constant coughing and hacking in a city or any public meeting. This is out of control. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not coming back, are you?
Any other public comments? Carrying sitting now, we'll post public comment and move to item thirteen, agreement. Move to adjourn. Motion for the Councilman Carson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams Harper. All in favor?
Aye.
This has been a Georgetown production. George Chatches reporting.